Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the study session for the Mesa City Council for the afternoon of April the 5th of 2021. We are excusing Councilmember Heredia and Councilmember, Councilmember Heredia from both meetings and I believe Councilmember Thompson from just our study session. We think we might see him upstairs. The next, the first item on our agenda is to review and discuss items on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I know we had a lot of staff presentations at our meeting last Thursday, and so there's a lot on this agenda that might, may stay on the consent agenda, but that's not for lack of discussion. We've had a lot of good information about that. But council, let's begin with Mr. Luna.
Yes, I was wondering if Mr. Brady would speak on 6E. We all received a letter from Ken Patricia Smith relative to the property across the street and if he could speak on that.
Sure, I think there were several elements to that. So RJ, come on, yeah, RJ's going to come up. Nana's here. Nana, maybe you could kind of go through the discussion that the applicant, not the applicant, the citizen had regarding, with the DRB regarding the landscaping, maybe not. RJ, first of all, let's talk about Meridian Road.
Sure.
I think it's coming. So let's talk about Meridian Road and the current status and the projects being done. There's some concern about the need to have Meridian built out right now and the status of the project. Can you share that with the council?
Mayor, members of the council, RJ Zeta with the Transportation Department. Currently, the town of Queen Creek and Pinal County are in design for improvements to Meridian Road on the Pinal County side of the border. So it will run north from Germaine Road and intersect with the new freeway extension of State Route 24. The gentleman that sent the letter is asking that Mesa move forward. Either we build the west half of the roadway or ask CMC Steel to build the west half of the roadway. The concern is that you're transitioning from a three-lane roadway in each direction down to one lane in each direction when you get north of Germaine. The gentleman's concerned about safety. I can say that Pinal County and Queen Creek are using a reputable design firm. It's a firm we use on our projects, and we have no reason to believe that they won't make the transition at Germaine Road going north, you know, in a way that is unsafe. In fact, it's very frequent that as development is happening, in particular, we'll ask the developer to put in a half-street, but you don't get the full roadway improvements necessarily, you know, at, you know, when the first development comes in. Even if CMC Steel were required to put their portion of the roadway in now, it will still go back to one lane in each direction because the freeway interchange is a half-mile north of Pecos Road, which is CMC Steel's northern boundary. So as you know, with our Mesa Moves Bond Program, we are investing millions in southeast Mesa. Signal Butte Road, adding lanes to Ellsworth Road, realigning Ray Road, Elliott Road, Sossman, Williamsfield at Ellsworth and over to the freeway. So we really are investing a significant amount of Mesa resources in that part of the city. Where this roadway is located on our eastern boundary, it's just not a priority for us right now. And we are very comfortable that the work that Pinal County and Queen Creek are doing jointly will provide for safe access for people coming up from Queen Creek.
And then, Mayor and council, I think there was a reference to a development agreement that we executed back in 27, something around that time, 2007, where we deferred the improvements for the development on Meridian. And the reason at that time, there was no Meridian, there was no, it was, it was a road to nowhere. To begin with no connection, connection left nowhere else to go. The conversations where we've had with the current property owner is really to find projects that would be beneficial to them as well as to our community. So we're still in discussions about the deferred amount and how those would be used. We certainly have had lots of discussions about other opportunities, whether it's Pecos Road, which is to the north of this property, which has significant impact, not only to this property, but to other large manufacturing groups that are in Mesa to the north of this property. So we might get more bang for the buck there. We've got discussions about possible rail lines coming into that area. So there's a lot of discussions about a variety of projects that will ultimately, the development, sorry, CMC Steel will contribute to as part of the development agreement. But we're assessing the best priority of projects and what those might be. So if you don't have, I was going to have Nana talk, is that, should we go there first, Mayor, or do you want to see if there are any questions?
I have a quick question. Does pursuant to the development agreement that's in place now, does CMC have an obligation to participate in, in building out the, the west half of Meridian?
No.
It doesn't?
So the, the, the way the product, the development agreement was written is to allow for the city to defer that and then to determine, I don't know which the last amendment it was, but do you remember? Second Amendment?
Yeah.
That we could determine other, any other projects that could be used for, that would benefit the property owner as well as, that the city was a priority. Like, and that's why I said, I mentioned that while the individuals talking about Meridian, again, Meridian doesn't create, very, create very little benefit at that point for Mesa taxpayers. But Pecos, which is also adjacent to this property, may be another project we might consider, and there's a lot of drainage issues there. There's the, there's lots of discussions that have been going on for the last couple of years about bringing a rail line into this area. That may be part of a contribution that would be important for that rail line too, which would benefit the property owner and for us, would benefit several properties west of this location. So we're evaluating, and as we have been with this property, or with this, yeah, with CMC Steel over the last decade, identifying projects that we think work for both them and for the city.
Okay.
But there's no obligation to do a specific project, Mayor. There's a financial obligation to make a contribution to a public infrastructure.
So the likely timing of building out the east, I'm sorry, the west side of Meridian will depend on traffic counts. That'll be a City of Mesa project, and we'll just prioritize it based on, on the needs of the community and the traffic counts and when it ripens to be at the top of our agenda.
As Mayor, as I mean, as RJ was pointing out, it's not that we're not investing in traffic that's going north-south. You know, Ellsworth was one of those roads that tapered back and forth, and we've been investing millions of dollars to, and working with development to bring that to the full lanes. And now we're currently, RJ's got under project or under engineering, Signal Butte, which is a major north-south arterial, and that still would, we still have more to do on that project.
Correct. And that project actually is being phased as well, but it will go from Williamsfield through the new freeway extension down to connect to Queen Creek at Germaine Road.
And then eventually, we'll look at other projects. But we always have to remind developers and even our general community members in that area, is how much the City of Mesa's contributed to State Route 24. And now the state route, it's kind of, we created our own monster because we created, we helped accelerate that project and get it funded, and now that it's there, everybody was racing to get to that road, which is what it was intended for. But we always keep reminding people, but for the City of Mesa, that project wouldn't be there today. It would have been delayed. So we're, again, we're prioritizing projects and recognizing the opportunity to benefit. Dollars are invested, invested will benefit the most cars, vehicle, traffic in the area. So. And then Nana has, maybe you want to share with us kind of the conversation? Oh.
I think Mr. Freeman, I didn't ask that, that next question, Mr. Freeman.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, I was just going to have Nana share with you a little bit of the discussion at DRB about the fencing and the landscaping. Is that, okay, yeah, that's what we have.
Mayor, council, so at the DRB, the discussion that took place was when are they going to install the required landscaping and BIM? And basically, the DRB referred them back again to the development agreement. Because of the pending road improvement on Meridian and Pecos, it hasn't really made it tangible now to really construct the landscaping because the road width is all going to affect the landscaping. So that's why we defer in the landscaping to when the roads are ready to be constructed, we will know the width in order to install the landscaping.
So I don't know, Mayor and council, if we, based on the conversations we had, or not conversations, the letters that we've received, I don't know, did we miss anything? Jim, do you remember?
There's a question about perimeter fencing along with the landscaping. So is that follow the same?
Yeah, those are all the street improvements. So the landscaping, the BIM and potential perimeter landscaping are all together as part of the approval. But the BIM and the landscaping will affect the, whether we need the perimeter fence or not, because the BIM may be too high that we may not need a fence going on top of the BIM. So that all has to be, all of it has to come together.
And just a reminder, the, you know, this area's been used for a steel mill for more than a decade, and, you know, there's not been anything out there, and I guess as people start moving in and start developing, they raise the issues. It's the same reasons we've been very, we've expressed our concerns too about residential development that's taking place south of this property, not in Mesa, but in another community. Because this is the one area in the city where we, it's one of the few areas in the city, Nana, that we have heavy industrial as our designated zoning. And so you have some pretty intense uses, and this is the right, I mean, this is where we want steel mills, we want the TRWs, the Mathis and Gas, missing one.
Fuji.
Fuji.
CRM.
And CRM. So this is the intention of bringing these down here, and so we don't expect there to be any other encroachment in those areas. And so that's why we've kind of left them to make these developments as they are today.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that or about any other item on tonight's agenda? Mr. Freeman?
9A needs to come off. I think we have some blue cards for 9A. So we'll hear blue cards. Is that the right agenda item?
[inaudible]
Okay, great, thanks.
Right, yeah, 9A is the zoning case, correct? Yeah. So right now, the only, the only item off the consent agenda would be the 9A zoning case, correct? Okay. All right, council, if there's no other questions about tonight's agenda, the, we are in the middle of doing our budget reviews, so not in the middle, I mean, we're at the beginning of doing our budget reviews. So we will begin with our agenda item today, which is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the Police Department budget. So we're starting with the biggest budget we've got. Chief Cost, good to have you with us.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Management, thank you, and good evenings. Good to see everybody in person. That's a great thing. And I'm joined up here by my executive staff, who are outstanding men and women for our department. You know, the other day I saw, and we've talked about resiliency in such a time of uncertainty, and as we begin our presentation, you know, I'm just fortunate and honored to work with such a great group of department directors throughout the city, city management, and of course, the support from Mayor and council as we go through this time of uncertainty. As we start the budget presentation with the, go to the next slide for me, Dan. You just kind of glance up and you'll, you just kind of see some of the things, just by pictures of what our officers have been doing out throughout the year and how they're supported with resources from the city to go through this uncertain time. And it's, it's, it's really great to be part of such a great organization of men and women that are truly dedicated to our community. And as we go through the presentation, you'll see that, and we talk about the resources needed to sustain that and to keep that going with, with the community safety theme in mind, of course, and it's such a big part of who we are. And as we talk about our strategic allocations, and you think about the three academies that have been funded and the officers that we have going through the system for our pipeline down the road to keep growth with the community. And you talk about public safety by the numbers, and the third straight year that we've set a record for the lowest crime rate the City of Mesa's ever seen. So what a great place to live, work, play, raise your family, bring a business. We'll go over some of those numbers and addressing things like homelessness and, and of course, the impact that has in our community, recruiting, and then we'll finally end it up with, just to talk about our headquarters and, and how we move forward from here. So I appreciate your time. I'm going to turn this over to our Assistant Chiefs to begin the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Krista York, the Fiscal Manager for the Police Department. And what you have here before you is a summary of our expenditures by service level for the department, which includes not only last year's actuals where we kind of landed, as well as the current year budget, in addition to what we're expecting to end the year with, as well as the fiscal year 21, 22 proposed budget. Now, this is representative of all the funds for the Police Department, of which the largest funding source force is the General Governmental Funds, which funds approximately 81% of the proposed fiscal year 21, 22 proposed budget. For the current fiscal year, we're expecting to, no surprises, kind of ending the year as we expected. You will see a, the year-end estimate being larger than the revised budget. This is not as unexpected. A lot of this is due to the personal services enhancements which were made in January, and that's the impact we're seeing with those there.
So Krista, can I take credit, can we all take credit? That was the 3% pay increase and the $2,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I want to make sure clear what that was.
Yes, sir.
It was a good thing.
A good thing, thank you very much. Our personnel appreciate that. The proposed budget for fiscal year 21, 22 includes not only our base budget, but it additionally includes some one-time lifecycle items in the amount of approximately 3.5 million. Additionally, what you'll see here is approximately 14.5 million within the Operations Bureau, which is going to assist with the unfunded liability for the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, which we affectionately call the PSPRS. Additionally, we have carryovers reflected in that year-end budget.
Mayor, council, I'm going to jump in on this. I'm Dan Butler, for those of you that don't know me. So the strategic allocations this year is the enhancements to our budget. We are prepared to talk about any of these, if any of these pique your interest, but for the sake of brevity, we will slide to the next slide if there are no questions.
Can you just quickly, first bullet, maybe just tell typically over the years.
How many academies we're having? Because the fact that we see three there, that's a big deal, but somehow you figured out how to make that work. Just kind of elaborate on that just a little bit.
So the first bullet on the strategic allocations has to do with the funding to run our three academy model. If you guys recall, a couple of years ago, we went to our three academy police model from our, our traditional two academy model. The intent was the hiring based on the, the public safety sales tax that was passed in those years, and creating a model that impacts our staffing in a much more positive way. In the past, the two academy models, we would hire a lot of officers through the academy. It would take them a long time to get through the, the training cycle, which is 11 to 12 months, and they would be out on the street. By the time they got on the street, we would have retirements and other losses throughout the organization. So we were always in a staffing crunch. With that, in addition to the increase of officers that we've hired based on the three academy model, we come, have come to City Management and now to you to request additional funding for that model, for those extra officers that we're hiring over the next several years. And that funding has to do with outfitting them with ballistic vests, firearms, all of the equipment that they need in order to go through our training model and to be police officers out on the, on the streets.
Mr. Freeman?
Well, since you opened up for questions, Chief Butler, on the enhanced training, the, are we having enough hires for keeping up with retirements or medical or reassignments? Are people just leaving?
We absolutely are. I can cover it now, or I can cover it later in the presentation?
Oh, is it in?
We actually are prepared to speak about that.
We can wait.
Okay.
Just to kind of jog my memory.
That's a great, that's a great question. We will address it.
Okay, thanks.
Well, can I ask, to fit in three academies in one year, do you need to have like, or do they overlap? I mean, do they have, do you have a night class academy and a day class academy? Or how?
No, it's, it's, it's really cool, the way that we've set it up. There are overlaps in our academies. So at times, we are running two police academies. We'll have a senior class that's going through. For example, we started a class in January and we'll boot up our next class in, in May. We'll have our senior class still going through the program. Now, it's not without its challenges. My poor staff out there, they have done an incredible job being so flexible in order to make it work. And there was some trepidation at the beginning of this model. After a year of doing it, it has been incredibly successful, and we're having a constant pipeline hitting the streets. So it works out really nicely, but it does take some flexibility.
So Dan, I think I saw the number with three academies, that's about 110 recruits going through all of that, and we need that, Mayor, to get to, comes from Freeman's point, because out of that, we expect to get, was it like 75?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. We generally average through that entire training pipeline, a 30% attrition. So 30% of the people that we start with, as the rigors of the training, the intensity increases, some of them choose, hey, this is not for me, or they just can't meet the requirements of our, of our program.
So you'll keep that number in mind, because then you'll see how we've taken that number, which allows us to grow the total number of officers based on the sales tax, as well as, to your point, how it helps us to meet the demands of attrition as people retire or leave the department, that will have that number coming into the system that'll offset those vacancies.
Okay.
Mr. Luna has a question.
Yes, sir.
Chief Butler, so the three-year enhanced training academy, is that also in anticipation of the new public, public safety facility we're going to be opening on Brown?
It is all part of our five-year plan that we, we came forward to council with a couple of years ago, to the build-out to the Northeast Station.
And do you know how many we anticipate that will be placed in that facility?
Yes, I do. So the expansion is about 60 police officers. So what we'll do as we get closer to that, and it's like 64 police officers, as we get closer to that, we will do an evaluation of our Red Mountain Station staffing and our Superstition Station staffing, and then, and then redeploy some troops to the area. All of the officers that are new hires from the sales tax positions will be spread out throughout the city, but it will be a fully staffed police station.
We're not going to give you all the new officers.
Okay, we need seasoned officers.
Yeah. Okay, so moving on to this, and then after this slide, Chief Wessing will, he'll, he'll jump in and he'll talk more at, or more in-depth, and I think it's going to answer a lot of the questions that you have, Mr. Mayor and council. So if you look at fiscal year 21, 22, you see that there's 20 positions that we're adding based on sales tax revenue. 10 of them are sworn patrol officers, one of them's a sworn officer that will be assigned to another area, and then professional staff is nine. Now, if you average out the projections for 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25, and then you can see the totals on the very end, we've tried to keep a healthy balance of 60% sworn to 40% of our professional staff. This allows for us to have professional staff in areas that used to be sworn police officers, and for those individuals to do some of the duties that police officers used to do. So it's a, it's a more efficient model for us as a police department.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Ed Wessing, the Assistant Chief over at Patrol Operations Bureau. Apparently, I won the award for having to speak the most tonight, so I'll do my best to be as brief as possible, which sometimes is challenging for me, as my colleagues will, will probably smile and laugh at that. What Dan was just saying a minute ago was specifically the number of sworn officers that we're going to be adding specifically related to the public safety sales tax positions that council and the community approved. You'll notice on the graph here, we started at 761 total sworn, and where projections are 842 in fiscal year 24, 25. More importantly, what you'll note in the blue line on the graph, which primarily what you'll experience in, in many of your areas is the number of patrol officers that are responding to calls for service and will be responding to calls for service. At fiscal year 2018, 2019, we had 326 officers that were dedicated to patrol. This August, we will be bidding 349 officers, which is an increase of 23 patrol officers dedicated to answering calls for service. And as we project out, it will increase to 357 and 22, 363 and 23, and then finally, our projections are 365, which coincides with the build-out and the final reallocation of the divisions to, to the five patrol divisions across the city. One thing that I just also wanted to note is we're also adding some of those positions to our specialized areas in the Patrol Operations Bureau. Many of you will see our street crimes officers, our community action officers, our bike officers that are addition to the patrol officers that we have that are responding to those long-term community issues that I know your constituents reach out to your office frequently. And interestingly enough, we have 27 officers in training that are expected to come out and to be deployed as solo officers here mid to end June. So that will add to some of those positions that we haven't been able to fill just with that year-long training pipeline process.
I'll jump back in for this slide. You heard me talk a little bit about our professional staff and keeping a healthy balance for our Police Department. So mid-year position requests, these are positions that we made a request for mid-year. So we want to thank you by highlighting this, this slide here, and it has to do with funding our, our records unit. So we added nine position in our records and redactions process this year, so thank you.
And Dan, just quickly, the reason we're doing this is just that we've got a backlog of requests for records, and this is an effort to try to turn those around faster, correct?
That's correct, sir. So we had asked the city's Performance Excellence Team to do an evaluation of our records section to see if we were doing things most efficiently, if we needed additional person, because we were dealing with backlogs in that work area based on demand from our community for police reports, body worn camera footage. And they came in as part of the evaluation, these are the position ads that came through to help reduce some of the, some of the backlog there.
As a data-driven organization, one of the metrics that we're measured on is our crime rates, primarily our Part 1 crimes, which encompasses violent and property crimes. And again, as Chief Cost mentioned earlier, we have hit another historic low that we've never seen in the city since the 60s when these statistics were recorded. Our Part 1 crime rate per thousand residents is at an all-time low of 22.7 for 1,000 residents. That's a reduction overall of another 2% from last year to this year. And it's interesting to note that even when other major cities are seeing an increase in violent crime, we have seen a decrease. And, and that really speaks to the communities. It also speaks to the, the different programs that we have in place, but even across the, the country and cities of our like size, they're not experiencing that type of a decrease. And for comparison, to, to show the improvement in the city, in 2001, with a much lower population, we had experienced 67 Part 1 crimes per 1,000. 2011, we were at 38 Part 1 crimes, and now we're at an all-time low of 22.7. Some of our regional partners vary from 40 to 42 Part 1 crimes per 1,000 residents right here in the Phoenix metro area. The next slide, I broke down the violent and part, our property Part 1 crimes so that you could kind of see the difference. And I wanted to highlight a five-year breakdown in the reduction, and when, when we talk about reduction, we're talking about victims, and, and that's really how we look at our crime fighting model. Our overall reduction in Part 1 crimes in that five-year period equates to 1,825 fewer victims that were victimized by either a violent or property crime that falls under our Part 1 crimes. Finally, this last slide is just giving indication of where we do stand in cities across the country that are within 100,000 residents of our population. And as you'll see, we're at about third at 22.7 Part 1 crimes. Here in, in Arizona, Tucson is the closest at 40, just to give you a perspective of our crime picture here in the city. This is something that may have questions that come up, because we've been working very diligently since May of last year, and that is primarily our response to homelessness across the city. I wanted to share some of our successes and strategy. To give you just a little bit of an insight in the number of contacts that your officers have made, since our last 10 months of this project, we've made over 7,190 contacts with individuals that had a homeless connection. 36% of those contacts either received some form of judicial intervention, i.e. an arrest or citation, or we refer to some form of human services. 356, including 72 children, have been moved into some type of secure housing, which is adding to the success and our partners with New Leaf and some of our nonprofits and the other city departments. We've had 820 community court citations, and we do expect that to increase. The community court component is, is important because we can't arrest ourselves out of this problem. The community court gets these individuals in the process, but allows them to work through resources versus continuing that cycle of arrest warrant, arrest and warrant. We've 17 large encampments across the city have been cleared, with over 119 ton of debris that we've been able to remove from private property, state property, city property, but we couldn't have done that without the collaboration with streets, transportation, and environmental and sustainability. Additionally, although the initial project was stated to end in December, this is continuing as our, part of our normal patrol operations. So you'll see a continued reporting of statistics throughout the year. So I, I encourage Mayor and council members, whenever you see our community action officer, send him a note, when you have an area in your districts that you would like some special attention. I also would just like to talk about the, what we call a remote observation platform that currently is in Pioneer Park. It's a, a complete wireless, solar-powered security video platform that we monitor. We are in the process of the end of a RFP to purchase four, specifically four placement in hotspot parks. That'll be determined by date and also in partnership with Parks and Recs. And we expect to have that coming for you in the next couple of weeks. weeks.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. For those that don't know me, my name is Lee Rankin, and I'm the Bureau Chief over Investigations. So today, I'm going to talk just for a few minutes about mental health crisis and our response as an agency. As you know, the issue of public safety response is a national dialogue and national conversation today. The Mesa Police Department has been a public safety leader in developing programs that serve those experiencing mental health crisis. Our team approach and community partnership ensures first-class service to individuals in need. The department provides safe resolution to those in crisis with the goal of connecting those in need with long-term community care. The Mesa Police Department operates a crisis response team with, which consists of both trained detectives and behavioral health response, and also utilizing an embedded certified crisis clinician provided by the crisis preparation and recovery. So that individual is embedded with our detectives in responding out in the field. The team provides wraparound services to those in crisis, serves mental health detainers, and provides support to the department, including ongoing behavioral health training to all of our officers, and consultation to officers regarding behavioral health contacts. Since 2016, the Mesa Police Department has handled more than 16,000 suicide calls. Many of these calls were resolved by CIT-trained officers. Currently, we have 250 Critical Incident Team officers, which, from a patrol standpoint, that is, 28% of our officers are certified as CIT officers. When you compare that to the national model, most police agencies who participate in the CIT program are at 20%. Our communications personnel are also trained in Critical Incident. 30% of them, including both 911 call takers and dispatchers, are CIT-trained. After considerable planning, the Mesa Police Department began to utilize a crisis response network. CRN is a state-contracted, nonprofit organization dedicated to helping individuals through a continuum of crisis, referral and community care service. In 2019, our dispatch center began transferring low-acuity calls to CRN instead of sending out patrol officers to calls of individuals in crisis. That resulted in a transfer of 236 calls in 2019. In 2020, we increased that number to 1,125 calls that were diverted to CRN, which we believe is a transfer that gives them a professionally-trained and experienced mental health crisis specialist that could address any ongoing crisis. Today, we are working with CRN to embed a crisis counselor within our dispatch center. Their job will be to triage transfer of calls, provide training to our personnel, our call takers and dispatchers, increase the level of service and care needed to those experiencing mental health crisis without merely having to rely on a police response. So the graphs you see before you represent the intake of mental health calls received by our department. The graph on the right represents the call transfers to CRN both in 2019 and 2020. 2020 was the first year the department experienced a decrease in police response to mental health-related calls since 2014. There is a positive correlation, as you look at both of those graphs, between the transfer of calls to CRN and the decrease in police response to mental health-related calls. It is our hope that the increased collaboration with CRN will result in improved delivery of mental health services for people suffering and in crisis within our community.
Yes, Ms. Spillsbury.
Trying to learn all of this. What is MHD and 918 referred to on that graph?
MHD is mental health detainers, and these are the detainers that we serve based on the recommendation of the hospitals who would like to see those patients in their facility. So we're serving those MHDs. And 918 is a police code for individuals who require mental health services.
So that's different than the MHD and the suicide, then they just fall in those three categories?
Yes, ma'am. And so that gives us our total for the type of calls that are mental health or behavioral-related calls for that given year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. This is great. I really like what you're doing and making these changes. And the crisis response network, what does that look like? Is that internal? Is that going to partners? Who is the crisis response network?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, great question. So, the crisis response network is part of the REBA, which is the Regional Behavioral Health Authority. So they're contracted with the Arizona Department of Health Services. They're the ones that have had the RFP. So it's a Medicaid program that provides services to either the indigent or someone who is a multimillionaire. They don't turn down any requests for service. The services that you see, most of those calls are reserved about, resolved about 70% telephonically. For those that aren't resolved telephonically, they have community response services, and then they have other referral services that allows us to provide, allows them to provide the services needed that the individual may require.
So I assume if a person makes 911 calls and is transferred to the network, it's immediately dealt with? It's not like someone will get back to you tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct. The CRN operates 24/7. Their trained clinicians all have at least a bachelor's degree. They work directly with the police and fire. When the call is transferred over, they triage and assess exactly how that should resolve, meaning it could either be done telephonically, it could result in a community response, and in some cases, it may respond, require a co-response with the police, given the level of a threat that the individuals assessed that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Luna.
Chief, I want to commend you for doing this program. This is wonderful. I think this is a positive direction that we're headed towards, because we know there's a lot of individuals that suffer mental illness, and this is a great opportunity to assist those individuals by providing the necessary care that they need. So, thank you for your leadership on this. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you, sir.
You know, this is such a topic that I think we all want to know more about. Mr. Brady, we might want to schedule another time, because I would like to learn more about this. I could ask a lot of questions about, you know, a phone call comes in, it's your classic, well, I don't, maybe there's no such thing as a classic suicide call, but someone describes a mental health scenario, and I'd like to know more about how you respond. It sounds like, you know, you, the dispatcher triages that, and it could get shifted over to the CRN folks, and then they triage it beyond that. They might kick it back and say, no, we need a police officer to respond in addition to or instead of. So I, this is all fascinating, and I think we'd like to know more about it.
Sure, and we'll be glad, we can come back at another time to do that. We've talked about this even before we went into the budget. I think the good news here is the police department's always had a relationship with the crisis response network. What we're now seeing and suggesting is an even more integrated role, where they would actually have staff in our dispatch, which is different than we've had before. So we can talk about the kind of the evolution of the relationship we have today and where we see to take it. They, the good news is, they have expressed strong interest in helping us and participating. So one of the things we want to do, and part of this is also, we want to assess whether their response is adequate enough to help our officers out on the street to be able to meet the needs. Because, as you can tell, just the numbers that Lee gave, there's a big demand. We just want to be able to make sure they have, if we're going to rely upon their ability to respond and be with us, that they can meet our commitments. But this is a top priority. Chief, and I've had a lot of discussions about this, about we really want to avoid getting a patrol officer out front if this can be handled by a professional clinician. And so, yes, we'll be glad to come back, Mayor, and have that discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Just Mayor, as a follow-up, I've just talked to Mr. Ponbié. We had talked about putting this on the agenda of our Public Safety Committee, because I think this is very topical, this is very important, and I would love to hear a little bit more about it, and certainly with my colleagues here, I'm sure they would want to.
That'd be a good place to start, and then we can bring it to the full council.
Yeah, if that's the case, I might, you know, not sit in the back.
Well, we'll bring it to you, too, Mayor.
Learn more about.
We just, it's like a dress rehearsal with the committee, and then we'll get it refined and bring it back to the council.
Okay.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention two things. Number one, kudos to the Performance Excellence Team out of OMB. They have helped project manage this, and they've done an excellent job. So we really appreciate their partnership. And then the second partnership I didn't mention is that Arizona State University, the College of Health Sciences, is also involved in making sure that they track the data and look at the metrics, whether or not, at the end of this process, we could determine whether or not it's been a success.
Thank you.
All right, finally, my last two slides. One of the other benchmarks that we track is our response times, primarily to our emergency or Priority One calls, which they used to be Priority E's, but they've changed to Ones, and then Priority Twos. Councilmember Luna, you did talk about the redistricting, and you will see a significant change in those response times, once we're able to shrink the geographical area that our officers have to travel to. And also, with the addition of the public safety sales tax positions, we're going to start to see an impact on the positive side. But our target is four-minute response citywide to emergency calls. We've met that benchmark at 3 minutes and 55 seconds. Certainly, you'll notice by the graph that both Red Mountain and Superstition districts are a little bit longer than that timeframe, but overall, the city has met that. Our Priority Twos, which are non-emergency calls, our target is seven minutes. We certainly met and exceeded that benchmark at 6 minutes and 8 seconds. And really, a note, and I think this is something that I'm very proud of, is that Mesa is the second-fastest law enforcement agency to respond to Part I crimes, or Part I calls, or emergency calls in the entire Phoenix metro area. That doesn't happen by mistake. Partly, we're grateful for the support that we receive from not only Mayor and Council, but our community with the public safety sales tax, and just our overall data-driven crime-fighting method that we've employed, and we're enjoying these successes.
Okay, I'll finish up before our last slide, and then Chief Cost will have some remarks for us. So, this is a topic here that I'm really passionate about. It happens to be in the area that I work, but I've worked in these areas for quite a while as well. If you can look at the slide, the IACP came out with a magazine article a little while back, and it's talked about the state of recruitment, a crisis for law enforcement. And if you pay attention to the news, or you see anything about policing, they are always talking about, through the media, how it's so hard to find great candidates to be police officers. You know, for the support that we have from our community, the support that we have from you, certainly with city management, we don't have that problem in Mesa. Every year, the last several years, we've had more people apply for police officer jobs than we had the previous years. So at a time where public perception may be that it's, no one wants to be a police officer, we're not having that issue here in Mesa. And we owe it to our community, we owe it to the support that we have as a police department. So thank you for that. If you look at the graph on the upper left, in 2014, we had a project we called a Community Engagement Hiring Initiative. Since that time, 50% of all of our hires have been women and minority candidates. That's something that our community demands. They demand diversity within our workforce, and frankly, we've got it done. We continue to do that. Transitioning into our training aspect for our police department, this year, we met, just like we do every year, and we planned out our training calendar to go forward. But we're constantly evaluating what we do, how we do it, and looking for better ways to deliver our services. One of the things that I'd love to highlight is what we've done with our field training program. We transitioned from a greater-than-20-year-old model to a new system that we just stood up this year. We're running our first academy class through this new training model. We call it our Show, Teach, Train, and Mentor Program. It's a, it's a transition from a highly strict show actions, and we evaluate the heck out of our recruits, to taking these recruits out, showing them how to do the job for the first phase, teaching them how to do the job. Then we train any deficiencies that we noticed there, and then we adapt that and mentor them along the way. So we're pretty excited about that. One of the things that we're adding to that program is almost like a capstone for a university project for all of our recruits. So as they go through this program, we want our recruits to focus on our community. So part of this is, we're going to build in to our training program, our recruits going out and meeting with those key leaders in the community and getting perspective, having in-depth conversations with those members, and figuring out if they're at the central station, what is it that's unique to our central station? What is it that's unique to all of our different stations? They gather all that information, and they come back in and present to the command of the training program and their station commander, everything that's unique about their station based on their collaboration interviews with members of the community. So it's something new that we're, as this portion of it rolls out, that we'll be adding on the back end of our program. So it's something we're really super excited about. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dan. When you look at this dataset and compare it to your past, there's been significant improvements. What is that attributed to? I understand, I think, Chief Cost, you talked to me about that when we were doing, we run Mesa, how you have your team that has done recruiting in local events to try to get individuals. Maybe speak to us a little bit about that, if you would.
Sure. So what we've done is, we've taken our recruiting team away from HR and embedded it with our Community Engagement Division. So everyone in this room is familiar with Tara Hall, and Minnie, and Kylie. That's the core of our Community Engagement Team. We took a different approach to recruiting and thought, you know, recruiting is nothing but engagement in the community. So we've gone out to all aspects of the community, and even in a time of COVID, you know, took it online, and built in a really cool recruiting platform. And I think, you know, that's obviously why we have the numbers that are coming in that other agencies just don't have. It's just the way that we approach connectivity. Okay, so, next two slides, we're going to talk about the headquarters facility. Did you, was there another question?
Sure, I'll go. So I hear you have parades, too, for part of the recruiting process.
Parades? The Easter parade?
Yeah, the Easter parade. I mean, that was a really good deal to showcase the department, right? And I know the Vice Mayor, she'll want to weigh in, but.
There was people following us all the way to the park, so yeah.
It's super cool, you know, and Lieutenant Spicer, he's in the back of the room right here, and I'll just give a little shout-out to him. Yeah, he started that Easter, Easter Con several years ago, and then this year, he was in my office every day trying to figure out a way that we can continue to do the Easter parade this year with the restrictions of COVID, and he did it. I mean, and it was him, him and Commander Nesbit out of the Fiesta Station. They did a really incredible job making that happen, so. But yeah, that's Community Engagement.
Well, it's part of the recruiting process, right? I mean, you're setting a platform for people that, you know, when you're young, you go, well, I want to be a police officer, or.
It really is.
I know you want to talk about it more, but sorry.
We probably stole that out of our fire.
Does it have to be Easter? Why can't it be something else?
Yeah, throw out some suggestions, so.
I need a little humor right now. Thanks.
I think he's a little jealous. It wasn't my district. I'll cover that later. Okay, we'll cover that later.
Don't put it on Facebook, yeah.
All right, so you heard a ton of really cool things that we have going in all aspects of our police department. What I kind of want to do, since we had all those really cool success stories, is throw out something that we've been working on that Mr. Brady has been supporting. You see the really cool picture of our police headquarters right here? It was professionally taken. We did it by design because we wanted to impress you. And Mr. Brady wouldn't let me put the other picture that I presented to him on there, so. But what we're in the process of doing is seeking a way to revolutionize our police headquarters, like we've done in all aspects of our police department. In 1974, the basement and the first two levels of this facility were built. That's almost 50 years ago. We've actually reached the end of the plumbing lifespan for the plumbing inside of this facility. The electrical in the facility is at capacity. We have upgraded boxes, but we can't expand upon that anymore. And as you know, like technology, it has a high electrical demand. The HVAC, it's absolutely outdated, and there's actually some issues with fresh air draw from the outside of the building into the. some issues with fresh air draw from the outside of the building into the, into the building. It's not ADA compliant, so. And the five-year estimate, or the eight-year maintenance estimate, comes in at about $5 million. So, for the next eight years, it's going to be pretty expensive. So, what we want to do is build a building that looks just like this, and Mr. Brady has agreed to allow us. No, what we want to do is remodel, renovate this facility, so it serves us and the community for the next 50 years. And we want to do it in a way that's a little bit different from how police departments have been done in the past. We want it to be something that is integrated with the community, to where there's spaces for the community to engage with police officers. We want to utilize technology to make our facility, our work, and for the people that work inside that building, a little bit easier, I mean, to put it simply. We want the environment inside the building to be something that's a relaxer. You know, there's aspects of stress reduction in there, and that's something that modern buildings have taken into consideration as they're being designed. We want to have improved efficiencies and then innovation with our workplace, to where we can look at this facility and grow into it over the next 50 years with the existing space that we have. So, it's something that is, it's well underway. We sent the, the RFP is out. I met with the team of a lot of other really smart people to start talking with interested companies that are, that are working to develop proposals for this facility.
So, Dan, be clear, is an RFP for what? The design?
To level the building? It's a, it's really just to look into how we can design this, check into it. We certainly are not saying that this is an absolute go, but it's something that we're really looking into quite a bit.
Mr. Luna, then Mr. Freeman.
I think that's a great idea, especially the evidence room. You've got to fix that place. It's scary in there. If you can do something like that, with the state-of-the-art evidence room, I'm for it, so.
All right.
Mr. Freeman.
Do you have the same office I was in before?
Is this a trick question?
You need a better office, I tell you. I thought I walked into a closet.
I've been telling the chief that for years.
Only the best for Dan.
Unless Dan is number.
Now, you know why who's motivated to do this project. So, the longer we keep it in the closet, the harder it'll work on this project.
That's true.
Okay, well, there's an incentive, right?
Yeah, I was talking about the lighting as a stress reduction, or stress reduction, and the lack of oxygen in there. So, imagine if I had all those things.
I don't think you could escape out the window in your office.
No, I couldn't, no.
Thanks.
Councilmember Spilsbury.
Your building is officially older than I am, so something's wrong with that, right? I think it's a great idea, too. I mean, you know, I think that rendition you have is perfect, so, matches what's going on in the department.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor.
So, is this a rendering, a proposed rendering, or is this from another, because it's OPD?
Yeah, it's a Orlando Police Department.
Orlando, okay, I was going to, is it Oregon?
There's no M there.
Or was it like an ASU redo, or I'm not sure?
Should we go with this?
Mayor, Council, the challenge we have, you know, especially when we're doing remodels of major facilities, like especially of police headquarters, is now what do you do with the people that are working there today during construction? So, we're really, this is a multi-step, and we want to make sure, and I've challenged the police department, and you can tell they're thinking about it, is not only what will meet the needs of today, but trying to project out into the future. What is the Mesa Police Department? How do we do policing into the future, and making sure this building addresses that? So, we have multiple steps to go through, and we need to get some outside consultants to assist us, and just thinking through the programming, and then even sequencing of how this would happen, because are we going to have to stand up temporary offices or use other areas? Because there's going to be a lot of dislocation. How much sense, does it make sense to do the building all at once, or do you do it floor by floor? So, you can imagine, there's a lot of variables in this conversation that we need to gather and bring it back. I don't think anybody, I think everybody has agreed that something needs to be done on the renovation. I know Chief Kameli's back there raising her hand, saying, "Next." So, we'll, you know, we need to work through all of these older facilities. But I think what we want to share with the council is, we are beginning that process with the preliminary evaluations and assessments, and we'll keep coming back to you as we, you know, move along.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that the best argument you can, the best strategy you can adopt for getting this done is inviting council to visit you and your building. Because every time I've been there, did you write, it feels, I think everyone feels a little oxygen-deprived in that building. Okay, thank you. Does that complete your presentation?
Yeah, so, just the last slide, just to thank you for your time, Mayor, Council, we appreciate it. You can see just by the detailed and sometimes humorous presentation that your police department is really striving to meet our community needs, you know, with our, our community safety at the top, at the top of our priority, and working with our community, and all the things that we have, and the resources that is provided to accomplish all those. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, Councilmember Spilsbury has something.
Yeah, I just wanted to say huge thanks to what's going on. In my short time on council so far, I've been able to go on a ride-along, visit the facility training, the training facility, do a SWAT team, you know, what do you call that? Training. Anyways, I've just been super impressed with everything I've seen so far. I wanted to ask, on the special operations detective that's been added, is that possibly a heat detective that would be added?
Yeah, it is. Lee, did you want to talk about that real quick?
Cover, Chief.
So, yeah, last year and each year, we've built a special operations detective to keep building our heat unit for human trafficking. So, yes, that's exactly where that detective is slotted to go, and in fact, has already been slotted as a temporary duty assignment until we fill the vacancy. So, we've already dedicated a person over there, even before July, and we've combined efforts with our Organized Crime Section and other sections of the department to really be a force multiplier to attack that critical issue in our community.
Awesome, thank you. I've looked into that quite a bit, and I'm really impressed with what's going on there, and I think they would take as many detectives as we could give them. But I, I think a lot of what we're doing is reactive, and so, I would love to have more people to be more proactive, and it's just, it's really incredible what's going on there and important, so thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question.
Well, thank you. Mr. Brady, any additional discussion we need on the police budget?
I think we just spent half the budget, so that's a good start.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I would just like to make a comment, and thanking you, and taking the police department to be very innovative ahead of its time, and many of the things that are going on in policing now, we started, we, meaning you guys, and two years ago, and keeping, engaged with the community, and revising policies and procedures, and fine-tuning that. And I think it speaks well of where we are today with our police department, very well-respected. I feel we have, the community has a great relationship, and I know it's because you've been innovative and kind of ahead of its time, so that a lot of cities right now are challenged with policing. And I'm fortunate to say that we don't have those same challenges, and I know it's because of the work that you're doing and continuing to innovate. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Can you lower crime stats going on that? That's great. No, that was sarcasm. You're doing great, thank you. But please do. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Nice presentation. Yes. If, the next item on our agenda, item three, is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know you've all been very busy, Council. Anything you'd like to share with us at this time?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I have to talk about the Easter parade, since PD is still here, and just to rub it in to Councilmember Freeman. So, on Saturday morning, I joined Mesa PD, and their staff and sworn personnel at Reed Park for a Easter parade. And so, usually, for our Easter event, we go to Reed Park, and the police officers grill up hot dogs, and there's a bouncy house of music and all that. And given COVID, we can't gather like that, and so, they coordinated a parade, driving through the neighborhoods around Reed Park, and just putting on the lights. The kids loved that, and the sounds, everybody was running out of their houses or, you know, waiting for us as we waved hello. Of course, the big part of the parade was the Easter Bunny out of the SWAT van on the top popped up, and that was like the big thing. We went around through the neighborhoods, came back to the park. Kids were still, were running to sing. And I'm like, "Hey, kids, I got candy." They're like, "No, we want the Easter Bunny." I'm like, "Okay, great." And then, the kids were running towards the police officers without any, you know, hesitation at all. They wanted the stickers. They wanted to talk to a police officer. They wanted their picture with the police officer. Of course, Vice Mayor is still over here. Wants some candy? They're like, "No." You know, they had their candy earlier, but, you know, they were so enthralled with the police department there, and it was a lot of joy, a lot of fun. And so, thank you very much for making that happen. We had to skip last year, of course, but making this happen in a very creative way. The community just loved it, and it was good fun, and I appreciate all your time and efforts in tying 2,000 bags of candy together. Also, oh, last week, we did the Smart Cities Kiosk unveiling in downtown Mesa and throughout Mesa with Mayor Giles and Travis and his group. So, check out the kiosks in downtown Mesa. There are these guides that are interactive digitally, you know, to tell you about the businesses and the restaurants, transit, entertainment. It comes in multiple languages. It's ADA-accessible, even has a selfie camera. You can, you know, take a camera and email or text it to yourself. So, thank you to everybody for the Smart City, from the Smart City team, and Downtown Mesa Association as well, for making that happen. And last Friday, I attended a National League of Cities Large Cities Council, in which we talked about the American Rescue Plan, the expected guidelines, and implementation ideas, and we look forward to being able to work on that with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Amen to what you said, but the kiosks, I think, are going to be a big hit. The next time you guys are downtown, make sure you find one of these kiosks, and it's great entertainment for five or 10 minutes, just getting an overview of all of the restaurants, all of the different things going on. Again, the selfie station, I thought, was a lot of fun. So, the next time you bring your family down to downtown Mesa to go out to eat or do something, make sure you use the kiosks. I think it'll really add to the trip. As long as I'm talking, I know we've got others. I'll just add, the other thing I wanted to talk about today is, I had the privilege this morning of going out to the Dexcom facility on the 202 freeway, the huge Dexcom facility. We all know about Dexcom on Dobson. There's another very large, half a million square foot facility on Ray Road that fronts the 202 freeway, just north of Gateway Airport. Very prominent as you drive by on the freeway. Great thanks to Dexcom for making that space available for a drive-through vaccination center. So, during the heat of the summer, for the next couple of, two or three months, people will be able to drive through that large facility and get a vaccination in their car. It started today. It goes from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM every day. You do need to make an appointment on the state site, but I think, you know, this is, and they're going to ramp this up until it's really distributing 10, 12,000 shots a day. So, this is really going to be a great blessing for our community, for the entire East Valley. No longer will you have to drive down to State Farm or some hard-to-find place. So, I just want to say thank you to the state of Arizona. Dr. Chris was there today and started giving shots. It was fun to see, and I hope everyone takes full advantage of that. And if you know people that, if you need a shot or know anyone that does, please help us promote that vaccination site. I'm sorry, I jumped in. Were there some other council members that wanted to discuss anything? Okay, great. Thank you. Well, that concludes our agenda for this meeting. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have our study session this coming Thursday, April 8th, and I just want to, we're continuing our budget discussions. So, for Thursday, you'll hear a presentation from the Economic Development Department and Fire and Medical Services. And then, the study session will be followed by a Sustainability and Transportation Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Ms. Spilsbury. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned, and we will reconvene upstairs.